Access to the utility.
Saving access to maintain power line and making sure there's no construction beside the right of way. Mount Wheeler would approve the abandonment if they could get the power line removed. So there's quite a dear on this, so yeah, we can't move, we can't move forward.
And Brad was gonna get with the Baker G I D. I believe there's a, a water stub, line stubbed into this property that they're requesting to deny. There's a fire hydrant that I believe that would fit in this right of way, which would be on the, the northeast part of this parcel that's requesting the abandonment.
So on this one, should I ask for a motion to approve and see if I can get anybody to take an action? Should I ask for a motion?
Just ask for a motion.
Ask for a motion to deny?
Either way, just, does anybody, does any board member have a motion?
Mr. Secretary of Order, I don't think, you cannot do a, a negative motion, so it would just have to die for lack of a motion, correct?
No, um, I would like a motion to deny, because there's these weird laws when it comes to applications for changing in land use, where if it's not approved, if it just sits for sixty days or something, it can be kind of ratified. This is weird, probably not with the land vacation like this, but parcel maps and other improvements, there's some weird laws. I don't have it for me, so a motion to deny it, for me, is the same as lack of action.
Mike, I just question, so if we, if we deny this now, does that, that doesn't deny their right to come back before?
Correct.
They could still come.
Any, any of you can make a motion to approve on the next time, if there's more information or a different plan.
I just don't want them locked out, just in case we are missing something here, or that theirs were unknown.
Correct, well, they're not prevented from it, and traditionally, Commissioner Bobby's right, we don't do motions to deny.
Couldn't I make a motion to approve and we just all vote against it? And then, and then that follows along with, with standard Robert two rules of order.
I'm more concerned with the legal aspect than Robert's rules of order. Okay. The Robert's rules don't actually have any binding legal authority on us, but the inaction on parcel map approvals and amendments might. And this would send a loud message back to, other than that, Robert's rules of, just so we know, Robert's rules of orders, um, of order are more like strongly recommended guidelines, as far as I'm concerned. And I want to violate them right now. I'm going to motion deny, if that's all right.
With that legal advice, I would make a motion to deny.
Motion by Shane, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passionate? Uh, denied?
Unanimous, unanimous. Like, sounds weird, I know.
It just doesn't seem right, but it's not right.
I'm telling you right now, it's not right, but it has the effect of law, and we only have to worry about the open law, really. And vote in the quorum, so.
Okay.
We'll send that back, and maybe you can go to the R P C, get us more information.
Okay, item two is another public hearing, this discussion for possible action. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public comment and consider approval of a petition for vacation and abandonment of road or easement. The property is between twenty-five South Baker Avenue, A P N zero zero five dash one one seven dash zero one, and ten South Saval Avenue, A P N number zero zero five dash one one seven dash zero five, located in Baker, Nevada. The petitioners are Donald Bell Crouch and Andre Kim Crouch, R P C Chairman John Charchauskas and Donald Crouch. That's submitted, so again, this is another public hearing, and this is also for action, so let's see if this is any different than the one we just denied. Is there any backup?
This one does create a, a problem for Mount Wheeler Power again.
Again?
Yep. Loss of utility quarter.
Okay.
The basement.
But then they said recommend approval, which is weird.
Where are their comments?
Mount Wheeler recommends approval, and all the other questions.
So apparently, the only person to be affected by that power right of way would be the property owner, if, if I read into that correctly, but I don't know.
So this is a little bit different than the last one.
Yeah.
It looks like, uh.
It says.
The adjoining owner has signed on for it, Mrs. Joy.
The adjoining owner did what?
I see right here, Mrs. Joy is the abiding owner, she has no comment on it.
And if there are comments online during public hearings, we do need to take that.
It says both properties in the alley have already been abandoned, rendering the unused alley useless.
Oh.
It looks like Mount Wheeler's all right with it. They're just gonna have to, the property owner's gonna have to accept it if they need power for that part of the property.
Did we have any public comment?
I'll go until four eight.
Okay.
Okay. Mike, this one here is a little bit different than the one we just did.
It is different.
And, uh, this has received the, uh, approval from Mount Wheeler Power, who is probably the only one besides the property owner that has a, has an issue with this.
Yeah, it would be strange for us to say, there's a problem with Mount Wheeler Power's access, if they're the ones saying they recommend approval.
Yeah, they're recommending approval.
The public hearing, George, you got something to say?
The, the existing, so there are two parcels we're looking at, we're looking, and it's the alley between the two. The alley, um, as you read in the comments, it doesn't go all the way through, but so if we're looking at the two properties like this, the power line actually comes in between them this way, and they're not running down the land that they're looking to abandon. They've already, I don't even know if they already have an easement, they are not, but the power poles are not in the existing property that they're looking to abandon.
Oh, that makes sense.
George, that's called, call that George, on court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're blocking off a public access way, you're blocking off a, a back entrance either for fire or E M S. We don't know what the plan is. If, uh, properties on O one, lots one, two, and three, and O five, seven, eight, and nine, are gonna be transferred into some kind of commercial enterprise, and the property is gonna be open, that's a different story, but you don't know. You shouldn't abandon an alleyway, a public access way, unless you have just a justifiable cause, and I don't see where you've done that. Not just in Baker, but only in E V also, Orme Gill, or Ruin. Those towns were laid out for a particular purpose. Those alleyways, those access ways were put in for a particular purpose. Don't take it away and tell you to have a viable plan on what is being done. I don't know if the, they request these on both parcels. You should run it through your planning commission and get the information. You guys are shooting from the hip, and you shouldn't do that. Thank you.
So Mike, I'd, I'd kinda like to hear from you. This is, uh, an easement between the two properties. So you want to abandon the easement and just allow access by one?
Well, they have, they have, the access, so far as the utility, is on one side.
But it looks like, if you look at the other parcels, that that's been, that this alley's already been abandoned halfway. Is that property, that's right down the middle, right?
That's correct.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that, that alley goes nowhere.
Yeah, so.
It's already been, I don't know, I could say it's been already been abandoned, but there's already.
The way the line runs right down the middle, it looks like that's been abandoned, and if you look at the, at block thirteen next, that alleyway appears to be abandoned. And block eleven, you've got block twelve, uh, you've got a partial block, uh, it looks like these are being abandoned left and right here.
Yeah.
And looking on satellite, there's not. There's no, there's no out, uh, alley, it's just, there's not an existing road or nothing going through there. It's just the draw.
You're looking at the same map we are looking at, this thing?
There's access to both of these parcels. It's either on the highway in, in Baker, it's the road to the caves, or it's the road that cuts in front of where the old school is.
Correct.
And there is access to, um, two of the sides for both parcels.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a, yeah, no, this one should be approved, I think.
First just text means that he had no issues with the abandonment, as far as from an accessory standpoint.
Yeah, this is like a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
Then I'll vote for a motion to approve.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Shane, and second by Lori. Any further discussion by anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passionate? Unanimous? Okay. We've got just five minutes to go here to our next timed item, so let's go over to Nicole on page four. Okay, item one A, this discussion for possible action, approval to appoint R K M Olson to the board of control.
Again, just for the record on that last one, the same property owner owns both, it's not too different, so looking at all this now, oh wait, makes sense.
Hey Nicole, uh, this is just pretty standard, right?
That's standard.
Okay, over for a motion to appoint.
Chairman, Mike, uh, believe it or not, uh, I have to be related to Mr. Olson, he's a distant cousin.
Obviously.
Uh, third?
Yeah, you can vote on it.
All right.
We hate everybody. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item B, discussion for possible action, approval of the request for the resignation of Jerry Walkshell from the L M P C Local Emergency Planning Committee. Have a motion to accept her resignation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
I'm not voting.
That's the first. Item C, discussion for possible action, approval of the annual evaluation from the Baker area Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, this advisory board just turned theirs in late. You approved the others that I received at the last meeting.
Any question by anybody, if not, I'll refer motion to approve the evaluation. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Shane? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, none, actually unanimous. Item D, discussion for possible action, approval to designate precincts one to six and five E as mail-in precincts for the primary election, pursuant to N R S two nine three point two one three four, to protect our most vulnerable demographic, the elderly, and the public from the spread of COVID nineteen, at a cost in excess of normal election expenses, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so, update, first thing this morning, the Secretary of State's office made this declaration, so you don't have to. They're making all elections for the primary election only mail-in. So, I need you guys to allow me these extra funds to do a couple things. So we're gonna probably save money by not hiring poll workers, not sending out sample ballots, and, um, not having to run as many publications in the newspaper. But, what the effect that this is gonna have is instead of a thousand paper ballots that I normally sent out, I'm nor, I'm going to send out upwards of six thousand, uh, paper ballots this year because of A V R from the D M V. We have more registered voters than we've ever had, like fifty-five hundred. So, I'm gonna need to send all of them out a ballot. When before, I was doing this in my time, just a thousand, you know, uh, enveloping and shipping out a thousand ballots. Now, with six thousand ballots, we're gonna need to contract with a company who can do this for us. I believe the quote they provided is in the backup material, they can do it for, I think it was nine to ten thousand dollars. That's printing all new envelopes for these ballots, uh, printing the ballots, stuffing them themselves, and mailing them out. I do anticipate postage is gonna be quite a bit higher this year, I really don't know what it is going to be, but I'd like to budget twelve thousand dollars for postage. And, um, and there's two pieces of equipment I'm gonna need for this. One, and, and both of those are gonna be paid for by the Secretary of State's office. I don't know if we're gonna have to pay for them first to be reimbursed by them later, or if they're gonna procure them themselves. But we're gonna need a mobile ballot printer to produce more ballots than the ballot printing company can give me if needed. And I'm gonna need a low-capacity scanner, we don't, we don't have the quantity to require a high-capacity scanner. So a low-capacity scanner and a mobile ballot printer from my company should, uh, we should handle that, no, just fine, no problem. We will still be having an election day at the convention center, but instead of people coming to cast their vote, they're gonna come if they choose to deliver their ballot and to do same-day voter registration.
Uh, because this is, this primary is in public and only, do you have to send out to the Democrats as well?
Absolutely.
You have to send everybody, okay, that's, so, uh, Elizabeth, do we have any problem with this type of money?
Well, in order to do this, we're gonna have to, uh, I'll bring forward a resolution, I mean, obviously, we need to make sure that the elections can happen, the money will be dedicated to elections, what doesn't get spent drops to the bottom line, but I think we need to make available what is required. And I can bring back a resolution at our next meeting to take that one contingency, you do have that available.
Anybody got a question?
I do. On this breakdown, uh, what is the amount for the mobile and?
So that, I was looking. I didn't put any of that on there because the state's paying for it, but the mobile ballot printer is ten thousand, no, no, the low-capacity scanner is ten thousand dollars. The mobile ballot printer, I was not given a price on, because I wasn't even ever interested in those, but, but now, given the situation, I am. And because the state said they paid for it, I was not given a quote, but I will, I can obtain that information for it, too.
Well, I just didn't know what that said, if you've got to put the money up front.
Yeah.
What would that, so are you adding that to the twenty grand, then?
If we had the paid upfront, it would need to be added to the twenty grand, yes.
As long as we have a statement from the Secretary of State's office saying that they will reimburse for this, we would treat it like a grant, it's an auto, automatic augmentation. We don't have to include it in contingency.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Sounds like we pretty much have to do this, so.
I'll vote for a motion to approve then.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis? Second by Ian? Any further discussion?
And that's, that's worth the twenty thousand? Okay, thank you.
And, motion by Travis, and second by Ian? Any further discussion, again, anybody else? I mean, that will help the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, none passionate. Perfect timing, we're at our eleven o'clock, right on. So we are gonna go back to the eleven o'clock on page three. And this is a special, special meeting of the Board of Health, so I will turn this over to Dr. Bian.
And he's gonna.
Give us just a second there, get set up.
Dr. Zista, uh, the, the full presentation or?
Right, so, yeah, so before, um, while I'm just working on that, uh, I'd like to open the, uh, public health meeting with a public comment, if there are any. Is it, are we doing Zoom right now? Okay, and, uh, is the camera facing this direction? Okay, that's, uh, that's, cause I'm gonna, cause at this point, I went up at some point to address the problem.
You want to be my seat, you can have my seat.
That, that works out, but before going to, uh, any public comment coming in? Uh, through Zoom chat or?
Mike, did you have any public comment coming in on Zoom?
No, I had a call away from, uh, Desi, and that was before voting about the R S V T program and possible.
Okay.
Okay, no, nothing particular to this board, okay?
Oh, there's a comment, uh, can't hear, uh, move closer to the mic.
Oh, this is the mic right here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm still open for a public comment, if anybody, if anybody has any, this is the special meeting of, uh, Board of Public Health.
It just, that one's there.
Which one we're looking for?
If there are any, uh, uh, public health comments, uh, public, public comments, I'd like to, uh, uh, skip number one and go directly to number two. We'll go back to item number one, so, for the sake of time and other obligations, uh, discussion update on William B. Riley Hospital Action Plan, Ned Walker.
So, uh, just to give you some idea of some of the things we're doing at the hospital, we have limited our, um, visitors, and we have someone at, we own three entrances that are currently open to the public. We have someone who is stationed at each entrance, who's checking temperatures and asking, uh, symptoms, and if they are positive for those things, if they're visitors, obviously, they don't come into the hospital, but if they're not, uh, if they're patients, then we put them on like, uh, we call it the dirty side versus the clean side, you know, someone who's there for stick removal, and they don't have any illness, then we put them on one side for waiting, and then the other on the other side, so that we can try to reduce, uh, the possibility of contamination between patients. We also, we, I just received word, actually, as I was driving over, we are supposed to get more swabs in tomorrow, so we're gonna ramp up some of our testing. We still have limited testing kits, or like, limited testing swabs, I guess, I mean, everyone does, it's a nationwide issue, but, um, but we are gonna do some more testing, probably more than we have been, uh, starting tomorrow. And, uh, currently, at this time, we've done, I think, eighteen tests that I'm aware of, and we have zero, uh, they're all negative at this point. Our docs are now doing, uh, tele-visits where appropriate and where possible, either via telephone, or we have iPads over there, too, so they can use FaceTime or, uh, I don't know, some other tele-video software. We're asking patients to basically stay home if they've got symptoms, and if they feel like they need to come in, we're asking them to call ahead, so that we can try to get them, um, in quickly and get them in and wait for everybody else, either through the E R or the clinic again, depending on severity of symptoms. But, uh, we're taking a lot of different steps as far as changing our workflow and changing the number of patients that we have coming in. We've stopped elective surgeries and other elective procedures, um, trying to think what else. So anyway, we've, we've implemented a number of things, we've got a number of things that we are continually fine-tuning on a daily basis. But I just want to let you guys know that we are doing testing, we have been for a while, but due to limited supply, we have been doing mass testing. We did sign up with the county for, uh, the drive-through testing, but we haven't heard anything other than they did get our application, said we're on the list, but they haven't told us if they actually, I don't think they have supplies either, so it's just part of the issue. So I don't have anything else necessarily, you guys have any questions, or anything that you've heard, rumors? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, uh, moving back to item number one, discussion update on coronavirus by me, and, uh, Chairman, would you, is it okay if we switch seats? Okay, PowerPoint is on? All right, so, uh, the, the aim that I have for today is to, at least to give the public a real camera. Oh, right there, okay. Give the public some, uh, uh, basic knowledge, uh, to, uh, next slide, please. So to demystifying what is, uh, uh, everybody knows on Zoom, right, is, uh, it's a, it's shared screen on Zoom right now?
I hope so.
No, it's showing you. Okay. That's the, uh, that's the shared screen on Zoom, so people can see the slides as well.
I don't think I know how to do that, just yet, Dr. Bian.
Yeah, there's a button, there's a special.
And who's the host?
We are.
Okay. All right.
All right. There it is, now you know. Good job, thank you.
One helps to.
You've done this before.
Yeah.
You see me? You wanna see this?
No, I don't see you up there.
All right, so if we wanted to, uh, instead of having the virus be a mythical creature, we want to demystify, understand it, dominate information. We understand the disease, we're not gonna be so much afraid of it. Do, we also wanted to, uh, the public to know, there are prevention, uh, methods, we can do it, we have to be on the offensive. That's exactly what our county is doing, we're not waiting for it to hit us, we're actually doing, going on the offensive. And, uh, I want to also, the public, to understand why, uh, uh, the community leaders are making decisions as such, there is a rationale behind it, a good reason behind it, and it's not a random thing, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, it's not a reactionary thing, there are, uh, it, it's a, uh, methodical, uh, uh, moves that your leaders are doing, uh, to keep our county protected. I'd like to arm our citizens in White Pine County with appropriate biology consideration, so that we can also, uh, maintain some poise and calm as well. And also like to divi, uh, define what individual responsibilities are as residents of White Pine County. Next slide, please. All right, so I'm just, uh, this is just, uh, I'm not gonna go into details, but I'm gonna let you know that there are types of coronavirus, and, uh, which is about ten to thirty percent of a common flu. This, and, and so it's not, uh, uh, the, the group of viruses, uh, is not something that's old, but there are new strains of coronavirus, um, and that's what we're dealing with. So, through genetic recombinations, you've heard years back about MERS, uh, you have also, uh, heard about SARS as well. This one, the virus itself is called SARS-CoV-2, that's the actual name of the virus, and the COVID nineteen that you actually see is the disease itself. And next slide, please. All right, symptoms, uh, you, you've heard this over and over again, fever, cough, and shortness of breath. But, this is common to, uh, it is a common symptom for, uh, other illnesses as well, so oftentimes, it's hard to distinguish between coronavirus with, uh, like influenza, for instance. Well, which is why, uh, clinicians, they have to ask specific questions to clue in, as far as how much risk, uh, of coronavirus you have. So it's, it is a, uh, issue of probability, because nothing in science is definitive. So I'd like people to know that, uh, it doesn't, the symptoms doesn't be defined, but we go by that in order to clue us in, along with other questions we're gonna ask you. One of the, uh, hallmarks of this, uh, this disease is that the people can easily develop respiratory failure, uh, which is different from a common cold, which is why this, uh, we're taking this seriously as well. Okay, so, most of you, the vast majority of you, eighty percent will be, uh, will have mild symptoms, flu-like symptoms, and people can recover at home. About the ten percent will be more severe, we're gonna have, start having shortness of breath, one out of ten. And about four to five percent, they're gonna be critical, requiring, uh, intensive care, even at, uh, admission to the hospital. What's unique about this particular virus is that it has the capacity of attacking the lung in a way by latching on to proteins that sit outside the lung cells. So it has the capacity of penetrating really deep into the lung tissues, and there, that's how you get respiratory failure. Next slide. And I'm going to go this briefly because not that interesting information. It is a zoonotic disease, and what I mean by that is it comes from animals, usually from bats, but bats usually don't transmit directly to humans. Previous diseases such as SARS were bats to pumcivets. For those who can see the slide, it's in the right, left upper corner, if you wonder what a pumcivet is. And then passing on to humans. MERS was from bats to camels to humans, and is COVID-19. With, the best theory that we have is that it came from bats to pendolins, which is you see in the right upper corner. Looks like an armadillo. I think the scales are pretty enticing, I think, I think that's the attractive value of it. And we're thinking that this particular COVID-19 is different from your predecessor coronaviruses because it's harder to control and it's more adapted to humans, like the flu. Next slide please. This is an important slide because people often say, I mean, it's just, flu kills more people. I hear this argument a lot, flu kills more people, what's the big deal about the coronavirus, this COVID-19? One of the key elements of COVID-19 that makes so serious is the prolonged incubation period where people have those symptoms. So while I have those symptoms, I have the potential of passing on to you, to you, to you, to you, without even knowing. And the prolongation is important because it's thought to be up to two weeks of it. So how much people interaction you and I am going to have in those two weeks, it's going to be a lot. I have the potential of passing on to a lot of people. On top of that, the COVID-19 fatality rate right now is thought to be 10-fold of the flu, 10 times of that. You may have heard on TV, 3 to 4%, but that's when we didn't have enough data. Now that we have, we're accumulating data over time, we're thinking that 1% is probably closer to that. It's still 10 times that of the flu. So you multiply that factor to the, to the incubation period of that, you have disaster in the making. So the argument that flu killed more people doesn't hold merit because right now, we're talking about, what they're talking about is absolute number of deaths. Yes, flu killed more people, but the death rate of the COVID-19 is faster. So it does still have the potential, and we have not peaked yet as far as what the disease can do to our society right now. And influenza has about a 24-hour contagious incubation period, unlike the two weeks that I told you about. So if you have the flu and if you don't have the symptoms right now, I'm going to know it by tomorrow. That's different from two weeks. And yet influenza killed a lot of people in 1918, so 75 million deaths, and that's a lot. So next slide. So, hey doctor, I heard five to seven days incubation period, now you're saying two weeks. Well, I mean, well, tell me, which one is, which one is right? Well, if it was that easy, right? So if you, that graph that you see, pretty much, it is like a bell curve. Most people, for an average, will be five to seven days. The graph is not being solidified on the rock yet, the graph is going to move. But it is indeed a curve that you're going to see. People are thinking between five and seven days for, for the average or for the majority of people. But it can be up to 14 days and some cases even up to three weeks over there. So if you just look at the graph by itself, you're going to say, oh, 14 days, only small number of people, what's the big deal? Why is the 14-day period being so enforced? And that's because we're talking about sheer number of people. For example, just so that you have a mental picture, China has a bigger population, right? If, and you're talking about, yeah, those, the percentage-wise of people at 14 incubation, 14-day incubation period may be low, but the absolute number is going to be significant enough and with the potential of passing on. That's why 14-day period is so critical, and we're using it as a standard in terms of quarantining people. Because it does, it is still a big deal, that number. Next slide. So how's it spread? Most people know this by now, by dropped saliva, nasal fluid, and also, we're also thinking about fecal oral spread as well. They, the virus is spread through close contact, there's a six feet room. If you sneeze, that's going to go 10 feet actually. But we're, we're trying to decide between public compliance, credibility, and what's the best distance where people are going to comply. And since we're also trying to think about probabilities as well, I think six feet happens to be the number that was decided. Decisions made by policymakers of warehousing people in cruise ship, that didn't bode really well. The air circulated, people keep, even though they are distancing physically, people keep getting it. People keep getting it just by sheer presence of being on the ship. And survival date rate on, survival days on the surface varies between what kind of surface. The up to three day is based upon stainless steel. So restaurants, for instance, they will have stainless steel tables everywhere, that's the standard for restaurants. They can survive three days on it. You heard maybe cardboard about 24 hours, in the air, about three hours. So, which is why widening out the surfaces is important as well. Next slide. While preparing this slide, I'm going to let you know that the numbers of times I had to change the map is, is, it's pretty amazing the numbers of times I had to do it. And that's just the point of the slide. Next slide is just the current state of Nevada. And you can always see that on the, look it up on the internet. And the next few slides are just giving you a few resources as far as if you want to see the map as well. And you can go to the next slide as well, and one more. One previous one for me, there you go. This is just going to give you an idea as far as how contagious and how bad the coronavirus is. As far as the x-axis, the horizontal axis, you're going to see how, how fast the virus spread. So if you look at the way on the right, you can see measles, measles is just notorious, it has the potential to spread really fast. And on the upper, way upper, you see the bird flu, they don't spread as fast, but they're really deadly. So where does the seasonal flu stand? As you can see, it's, as far as death rate is .1 with the ability to infect, what is it, the one person at a time? Every, every number, average number of people infected with each sick person. The coronavirus fits somewhere between in that red box that you see. Now that we know better that it affects more like 1%, the box is going to be shorter than that you see here. And it has the capacity of infecting more people than the seasonal flu. So that gives a little bit of comparison. Next slide. Prevention, you've seen this during my first public health mandate as far as what we need to prevent. This is, has to, this is something that by now should have committed to memory for most people. Wash hands, soap and then water for 20 seconds. If you're going to use sanitizer, it has to be 6% alcohol at least. Keep your hands under the chin, avoiding touching the face. This is harder, this is easier said than done, and just because of our own habits, I'm guilty of that as well. We just have to be more conscious about it. Avoid contact with close people who are sick, stay at home when you're sick. Coughs and sneezes on the elbow, and clean surfaces frequently as well. Currently, we're working on the vaccine, we don't have one yet. Now, the issue with masks. Now, you've seen people electing to use masks or not. There's a reason why CDC says, you know what, when I look at the big picture, masks for routine use is not a great idea because most people are not used to wearing masks. It's, it's fuzzy, people are going to make adjustments, each time you'll be touching their face. So as far as risk benefit assessment, people may have actually increased risk of getting infection on routine use, to be specific. So a more chance of contaminating the face. And the longer you use the moisture from the mask, it exacerbates the capacity of transmission. So when, when the CDC had to make a general recommendation to the, to the vast, to the, pretty much to the public, they had to pick whether it be A or N. And based upon the risk assessment, it says, you know what, N is right, now the right answer. So who should wear the mask? It's those with no symptoms, that the people with, with symptoms don't spread to other people who CDC says you should not wear a mask, so the ones that are sick should wear a mask. And healthcare workers and first responders that are on site, their masks should be using. I like to make sure that our first responders and our law enforcement are well protected because they are pretty much on the front lines of every, every public health need. You also heard about the M95s, the general public, they're not fitted. You have to actually be fitted for it, and you have to be actually educated for the M95 mask. So not, if you're not fitted for it, it's not going to do any good. So next slide. So common themes about the prior outbreaks. You'd think that we, as human beings, we learn about the prior outbreaks and kind of make adjustments, but that's not always the case. We, we did, do have insufficient regulation dealing with animals, that's one of the common themes. Government suppression of information, that's another. Inadequate government response, unprepared healthcare systems, and the heroism of healthcare workers and first responders. That has been the common theme of prior outbreaks as well. And why we don't learn? Because we have, everybody has their own priorities. Next slide. So that's why I'm going to show to you as far as what are people thinking, where do they come from? What are their perspectives? What are they thinking about? Epidemiologists and the scientific community, they're the ones that sound the alarm. Say, hey, public policymakers, here's what's going on, we are alarmed by it, I think this is what we should do. So the political leaders, the public servants, they have to take that information and, all right, we have to, have to think about other issues such as economy, law and order, things like that, and kind of make decisions based off of that. The epidemiologists, they will think, have to understand the pathogen and make predictions to see how the virus is going to behave, monitor the spread, they have to make predictions where it's going to go and how fast it's going to go. And then go to the next slide. And other leaders, political leaders, they have to think about, how is this going to disrupt the economy? How are we going to go through our normal business? Are we, are we being overly cautious in this case? Are we, they have, those are some of the things that go through their minds. They're the source of reassurance to the public, they're going to get questions from the public. Yeah, they're in the position, they have to say, oh, we've got to suppress the public panic going on. And we have to maintain a certain level of law and order as well. Next slide. All right, so people are going to get confused about all these mixed messages going on. There are going to be conflicting messages between what science and the public servants. So people are going to be thinking, how bad is this? Is this, is this hyped up? Oh, for flu, kills more people, who should I believe? Who should be tested? So what about the treatments that are out there? How come we're not using it? For white, for us, from my perspective is, it is really important that we establish credibility for people. So I'm going to tell for the, to the public here that, that I'm not going to, the information that I get, I'm not going to exaggerate what I know, I'm not going to even sugarcoat either. So I'm just going to say exactly what, what it is, and so that you, people can make informed decisions as well, what's going on. So our Waipea County leaders right now, we're considering, okay, are we prepared? When is it coming to town? How do we know it's over here? I'd like the public to know that our geographical isolation is not a source of security. And that's because travel is pretty much ubiquitous, you're not, you don't live in the 1800s. Our population's density may be a source of reassurance, but we know that we all ended up going to the same places. People congregated in same areas, we have one hospital, we have one, just a few markets, few churches, few schools. It's pretty predictable where we're going to go, which is why it makes sense we have to postpone any mass congregations. So the potential of transmission appears the same as anywhere else. And on top of that, we have to consider that we do have limited resources. So our capacity to mitigate, capacity to containment is low, which is why to prevent in the first place is important. So if anything else.